So, I will call to order the North Hampton Planning Board hearing for Thursday, June 14, 2018. We always begin these meetings with public comment on anything that's not on the agenda. So, that's something we're required to do. And then we'll move to, I'm not seeing any or hearing any. We'll move to the 7 o'clock item, a towed site plan for a towed car garage storage by Chad Willard, Reds Towing off Damon Road, IDD-18D-3 in North Hampton. Is there a presentation? If you'll just identify yourself.
My name is Chad Rufo. I'm supervisor at Reds Towing out of West Springfield, Mass. This is Ben Scott, who's operations manager for Reds Towing, also out of West Springfield. So, we're asking the city if we can put a storage lot here off of Damon Road, I think the address is Zero Damon Road, it's next to where the lane construction is. And what we're asking is to put 35, up to, from 35 to up to 50 cars there. Our normal business hours of operation are 8 to 4:30 in the afternoon and on the week, Saturdays from 8 to 12. There's no lights, there's no building structure, there's nothing that would affect any of the residents on the River Run apartment complex. So, that's kind of what we're asking the city, what we could do. Sorry, I'm kind of nervous.
Why am I, I can't quite visualize.
It's tucked away.
It's behind River Run, you know, going down to the water.
So, this is Damon Road there. So, you go in by that commercial thing and on that driveway.
Oh, right. Down by where the rowing?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, okay.
It's just at 8 to 4:30 PM.
So, our normal business hours are 8 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday, Saturdays, 8 to 12. This lot is more of a drop lot. We are being requested by the state police to assist on the highway further up. And we're also being asked by the city of North Hampton for their help for different reasons. We are a AAA provider as well. So, we would be helping out in the city with those things.
Okay. When you say your business is, your hours are 8 to 4:30, but there could be activity there?
Well, we could drop a car off after, but there would be no foot pedestrian.
So, you're dropping it and you're leaving?
Dropping it.
And so, that could be 24 hours a day?
That could be 24 hours a day.
It could happen at any given time. But we're somebody who's, we do operate our yard in West Springfield and it's similar. There is a condo complex behind us. We've been in that location since '58. Our trucks are quiet and there's not much, I mean, like a person who experienced towing cars for the police, you tow someone's car at 2 o'clock in the morning and they don't hear it. They're not loud in closely like tractor-trailers or stuff like that, you know. They're smaller tow trucks.
Because I get to tow trucks every single night in North Hampton, so that's why I have them.
They're not like loud and obnoxious trucks with those loud jake brakes and, you know, noise.
But there is some amount of noise.
Right, there is noise.
So, the summary says 35 cars. You indicated 35 to as many as 50.
Up to 50, right.
Okay.
Where are these cars going now? Are they going to West Springfield?
Well, we're operating everything out of West Springfield, but we can't, we can't meet the ETAs for the state police high, further up on the highway up here running from West Springfield. And we also can't assist the city with police towing if it gets to that point without having a storage yard here in the city, convenient to the citizens.
So, someone would have to be based at that lot then, to be able to take the call?
During it, well, all the dispatching would happen still out of West Springfield. We run another lot in the same situation in Holyoke, you know, it's a satellite, like a lot we call it, you know, it's just a small, so, storage yard. All the calls come into West Springfield and they're dispatched through there. There would need to be someone up here during the day to release a vehicle that was towed or stuff like that.
So, would they have, would there be a structure or would they just be idling? Or what's the?
Pull in, most of the paperwork is done. What we deal with is insurance companies.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, the insurance company comes out and they get all their paperwork out of the West Springfield location. They may view the vehicle at the lot during the daytime hours and leave. We remove the plates off of a car and we deliver them to the customer or mail them to the customer once the insurance company gives us the plate number. So, there's very little foot traffic that we deal with and people. You know, our biggest issue at Reds is safety. So, you know, like Ben said, we can't make an ETA up here doing 100 miles an hour, it's too dangerous. You can't put a wrecked car in your truck and tow it from exit 24 all the way to West Springfield. It's too dangerous for the drivers and for the people on the highways, because the foot traffic is minimal.
Yeah. So, at this time, we wouldn't be looking, I mean, possibly in the future, maybe, but at this point, the driver would be there with his truck, you know, just do his paperwork right there, return it to West Springfield at the end of the day.
So, this isn't where people go and they get their cars towed and they show up a sign and they're like, "Oh, my God," and then they have to go to this location to get their vehicle? Is that how it is?
Right. Is the 100 by 200 the entire space or is that just going to be the size of the lot?
This is, this is where the size that we're going to use for the time being.
Okay. So, it's not the entire property that's there?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. Or the entire lot that's there?
No. But this, if this, it's for 100 by 200 now, so if they wanted to increase it, they'd have to come back, is that correct?
Well, I think you should specify what would be the trigger to come back. I think that makes sense because it's not that you might not want to consider it, but it may be that there's just more traffic there and you might want to look at other issues related to it. So, I would suggest that you set parameters, you know, if you need to expand to a different area, bigger area, that that would trigger amendment of the permit.
And is there a spec on the fence?
So, the spec is six feet. It's a six-foot chain link fence now and it has barbed wire on it. That's the current fence that's been there, or however many years that property's been there. It's overgrown right there, so we want to clean it up.
So, this 100 by 200 fence is an existing fence?
It's an existing fence. This is an existing property.
We would clean up around the edges and then we screen it this year.
I was going to ask.
So, you would screen it?
Yeah, we would screen it so that from the road, you wouldn't see essentially a junkyard view of it, not even selling carts or anything, but.
Would the screening be the slats or more like the wind, you know, like they use the tennis courts where?
It would be the slats.
It'd be the, you'd have to go and do the slats?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Yep. Well, we, we would probably do it, well, we would do it, we would definitely do the front side because that's invisible to the road. The backside is lane construction and then fatten wherever he has back there.
I'll just tell you, the suggested condition is that it's on all four sides.
That would be fine, that's what was required.
That's what's required.
And just to, just to, the reason behind that is that that's a parcel that's on the market now for development or office industrial use. So, we don't know what the abutters are.
Right.
So, it needs to be screened once that gets cleaned up and built.
Okay, that's what's required and that's what we would do.
How about signage or lighting or anything like that?
Well, our daytime hours, there would be no required lights at night. In the future, if things work in the city, then we would come back to the board and say, "This is what we would like to do," and at that time, dress, address the issues. You know, there's a big highway light right there with a big green sign that kind of lights up everything on that, on that Damon Road, you know, now. We wouldn't have lights. Our lights in our Holyoke yard, you know, there's a newspaper company that has, and it's not really a residential neighborhood, but our lighting faces our impound, doesn't face the public, you know what I mean?
At this point, we wouldn't require any lighting or signage.
We don't require that.
Like you said, in the future, if things work out, we would, we'd be interested in maybe converting the property more.
So, can you just kind of just say a little bit more about that? Like if things work out, like what's the goal? The goal is?
The goal is to run a profitable business up here and eventually, you know, develop that property, maybe purchase it from, or who we're going to rent it from.
So, would it be more like in Ernie's, like where you would be picking up cars that are legally parked in the city and bringing them there?
No. Yes and no.
Okay. Yeah, so you tell me.
It's two separate, it's, towing is a big, huge, wide area.
Yeah.
So, private property towing is, Ernie's does a variety of everything in the city. Private property towing, if you're parked out here, for the police department, you know, they formally work for AAA. So, that, we do not do private property towing. We don't do it in West Springfield. I don't want to steal your car. If you run into the store to get the gallon of milk, can you park here? And the property owner calls and says, "Hey, listen, I got a car here, not my deal," you know what I mean? That's the public. That's not what we do.
Yeah.
You know, we're not targeting it. If you get into a motor vehicle accident and the city calls and says, "Could you please come and help us?" You bet your bottom dollar I'm coming to help you.
So, that's when you say if all, if things go well?
Right.
Well, in the future, whether it's, whether it be this parcel or something else available in the city, right now, we're just looking at exactly what we're saying, what we want to do with that property. We don't, you know, we don't even know if that's possible down the road, you know, to erect a building or whatever, but that's some, a bridge we cross down the road and probably have to come back and see you all again.
Yeah. And that's helpful just because, yeah, we don't know.
Right.
What you're thinking.
But at this point, it would just be strictly a, you know, a ghost satellite lot, just dropping cars that are towed from this area.
So, just to elaborate a little bit, what we do at Reds is we do two different things. We do an environmental prep service. So, if your vehicle is involved in an accident, it's leaking radiator fluid, oil transmission fluid, it goes into the main building where we have a big oil-water separation system. And that, that fluid that is leaking gets drained and then the vehicle gets moved back to its perspective place, whether it's the city of Holyoke, that's usually, we call for the city of Holyoke in West Springfield. What we do, cars that are leaking in Holyoke that aren't significant, we put what's called it, well, you might know it as a pizza pan, right? But it's like three inches, you know what I mean? By four, by two and a half, and we put pads down and we put them under the car, you know. I know here at this lot, there's no water near it, you know, and I know there's water down the road, but it's not close to, you know, the area. The property becomes not valuable if you contaminate it, you know what I mean? So, it's not something like that.
We make every effort to not contaminate soil and groundwater and everything, everything leaking, like you said, gets brought back to West Springfield drained and then returned to general population.
Abutters have to be notified, do you think?
Yeah, but we haven't heard anything. Have you guys reached out to Ray Ramadell?
No.
You only reached out to him about renting an apartment, right?
One of our employees. That would be convenient.
You know, I used to live on Florence Road and it was, it was great, you know what I mean? And I moved to Holyoke in the job transfer and I used to run Kaylins for 10 years and then there was some changes there with ownership and things, and I've been out of there for about five years.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So, the entrance is from the Damon Road?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Yeah. I just, I don't know, nobody asks about that, but I mean, someone does ask, yeah. But about this residential, in the entrance, I'm very visual, so I have to still, where is the entrance for?
May I?
Yeah.
So, if you are here, this, this were like Max's, right? And River Run is down here, Max's is here, this is, you know, Damon Road comes up to here. So, this whole area is like a big triangle, 3 acres plus something acres, and this is all fenced in.
Oh, it's a white fence.
In the middle, there's a fence separating, this is one big piece of property. There's already a fence here and there's two gates. We're asking if we could use, we're just coming into this piece of property.
So, how you coming through here?
So, we would, yes, we would come up this way, the same way, lane construction, we're coming in or out with their equipment, the same access road. You know, onto Damon Road, when we were downstairs with the building inspector, he stated that it was like Water Street, Damon Road, there was something like, you know, we've been trying to come up here for a few years. Actually, we wanted to buy property on, up the road before the fish market. On the left-hand side, we wanted to clean it up, but there's just a whole bunch that's not going to work. So, this was, you know, another thing, you know.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the board?
Motion.
Any comments from the public? Okay.
Motion calls public comment.
Mark, it's closing. Do you have a second thing? All in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fine. It's not something, and I think that the trigger, so as I understand, we've got two conditions, one, screening on all sides with slats, two, if the size increases and it goes beyond that, the pre-established gate or fence size 100 by 200, that would trigger the need for another plan. And hopefully that does happen, which means you guys are being successful.
Hopefully the city loves us.
Have that in the form of a motion.
Motion to approve site plan for towed car storage by Chad Willard's, what Reds Towing off Damon Road, map 18D-3 in North Hampton with the following conditions, the existing fence shall have screening on all four sides with slat screening and if the size, if the need is determined to go beyond the confines of the existing size of the fencing, that would trigger the need for another plan.
Second, my test. All in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Congratulations.
That's it?
That's it?
You're good to go.
Don't believe all those terrible stories you have.
Oh, my gosh.
We're not, we're not Amber.
We appreciate your time and we'll forward to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adoption of the Open Space Recreation Plan. Is there a presentation?
It would be a short presentation.
Does it involve gun? Because let me stop you right now.
So, I subjected you to a long presentation at your last meeting. I promise I will repeat it. In case you're bored, you can have a presentation for the last hour.
Oh, no, it's okay.
I promise I will.
Maybe they're coming around.
Yeah. So, there's two documents there. So, just, I don't want to tell you where we are in this process. We are actually under some time constraint. We're hoping that you're ready to act tonight. We had a grant, it has been a year in the process. We had a grant that was due last week, due on Monday, that required us to provide the draft open space plan and we have to give the final plan as soon as possible. So, just quickly, I want to just highlight the main things and you may, I was just, the conservation commission is working endorsing this, you may hear a couple of people coming over from that hearing to come talk to you as well. But we held two formal public hearings. We appeared before committees in open session, that's 10 times. We did a rolling workshop along the bike path. We had a Wiki mapping website and friends on Hidden Trails of railways did survey in our behalf. So, we had a lot of public input in the process. With the exception of hunting, without exception, we found consensus in everything that we did and I don't think there's anything controversial. You know, some people think we should buy more land, some people buy less land, but no one came to a meeting saying, "You're not doing enough of this," or "Too much of that." So, hunting's really ultimately the only issue that there was disagreement. I mean, you may not like other things, but, and in essence, you know, this is a process that goes before eight different committees. In an ideal world, we would have built a consensus in all the committees and made a, you know, a plan recommendation to the planning, to the conservation commission, ultimately has legal authority, but absent any, to be clear, not only was there not a consensus on what do we lab, which at least I can totally respect, there was not a consensus on the facts, right? So, we often disagree about what are our values, but there's really a disagreement with basic facts. And a consensus building planning process just isn't the place to hammer that. So, in the end, there's one page, I passed out the one page to in the plan, that basically doesn't say anything more than the plan, "We're to consider this, here's what we heard, think about all these things." So, we sort of, we documented things because I spent hours of my life I never get back in the process to inform the conservation commission, but we don't take a position. You know, per rolling the process, people ask me what my own position was and what I said is, you know, I come from a bias of wanting consensus building process. I really, I'm not a hunter, I'm not an athlete, I don't really care in the slats, whether we allow hunting or don't allow it. What I was hoping is that we could hear all voices and respect all voices and find some compromise and I utterly failed at that, so I apologize. So, I mention all this only because, so this is, you know, the plan is 170 pages. The part of the plan that really counts is 11 pages of actions.
There's only 147 pages. Are we missing 30 pages?
Do you have the ADA thing?
I don't know, we have 147 pages.
Okay. I don't remember.
Just check.
What are you trying to hide?
You have the thing except I don't remember if yours include the inventory of what water fountains are accessible, what water fountains aren't accessible.
I don't know.
So, anyway, maybe it's 146 pages. But there's only 11 pages that's really the action plan. That's the part that, you know, is significant. And that again, that's what I presented to you last time. So, there is this piece that I failed to phonetically copy this and I wish I could have, but I don't think there's a lot of controversy.
So, I'm sorry, are you finished?
I'm done.
Oh, okay. So, it says here, adoption of the open space plan.
You are the.
Are we the, are we the final? Oh, we are, okay.
Yes.
I thought we were another one in the chain and then.
Well, we're not actually going in order, so we will be going to city council for endorsement.
Oh, okay.
But you're the only one that matters.
Okay.
We could have blown everybody else.
We like to feel that way, right?
Right. Yeah, because state law gives you the authority to adopt plans.
Okay.
And this is one of our plans. It doesn't mean anything if consent doesn't approve recreation commissions, that's why I've gone there, everybody. You're the one that manages for grants, the other ones that matter for data apex.
There is no way for me to say this without sounding like a jerk, so I just have to say it. Is this going to be proofread? Because it's like riddled with errors.
Yes.
Like not just like typos, but like keywords left out, like?
No, actually, so this was.
Because it's difficult to like adopt it when it's like, oh, there's like half an action sentence, it's like missing the other half.
Yes.
What does that mean?
No, we're well aware. So, I'm never great at reading my own, proof of my own stuff, but in this case, I need to try. So, we literally had a deadline to get to this.
My thought was this is like dragon dictation because it was like dictation and I was like, I don't know what this means.
Yeah, no question. The other thing, I won't tell you, but some of the maps are actually maps from seven years ago where we swapped them and now we're using maps. So, yes.
Oh, yeah, and there's blanks on like acreage numbers and stuff that, yeah.
That was absolutely a great thing on time for doing it. Then we had lots of time for doing this. We have a woman who's doing, we have this tax write-off program, who's our in design person, so yes, we do all that stuff.
So, essentially where we came to after our long conversation with folks about firearms, which was very one-sided because that's who came, is it seems like you did take kind of, I mean, I remember that night, we kind of ended up with kind of some big picture issues and it seems like you've tried to incorporate those. But I think you're right, the, I guess, point number two about the community perception is polarized more, I mean, yeah, it's like beyond reasonable conversation at this point almost, like you said, it's like you can't even agree, like where are we a little bit? So, but I think the conservation commission is a, you know, I think that's a viable place for it, for that discussion to take place.
Is that an actual mechanism? Like, I mean, if they, if the conservation commission is like, forget it, like we just, you know, this is thorny and we're just going to be hands off. I mean, what, you know, if this is in here as an action plan that the conservation commission should discuss a framework, is there, there's no teeth to that though, right?
This is a plan you can totally ignore. I think they'd want to do it, but, so the difference is, this is a plan that covers 36.1 square miles of the city. And at that level, it got people's imagination, whatever side you're on. Conservation commission has two ways to go forward. They could do the same thing and I think they're going to be as frustrated as I was. Or they had a discussion about in Rainbow Beach, where we've allowed hunting for 20 years and I've never heard a complaint, is that the appropriate place? Or maybe that's already solved, is X area? And I think there's going to be some natural thinning out of people on both sides, frankly, in the process. So, I think there's a way forward in the process, but yes, they could.
So, what is their framework, their framework just, you know, let's say they make, they make a framework, is it just a document that they propose to you or to us or city council? Like what is the?
So, conservation commission is authorized to pass actual regulations. They're the final voice.
Yeah.
So, they can say, they have to hold a public hearing and they could do, as you say, one public hearing or, you know, one for creating for a land they own, but ultimately, they get to write those regulations.
Okay. So, that's the form that their framework would take, it would end up being some city or no?
So, when, you know, when, we, Rainbow Beach is sandwiched between two pieces of state land. The reason it allows hunting actually wasn't a part of the grand scheme is that we asked Fish and Wildlife to manage our property for us because we couldn't get there.
Yeah.
And they said, "Sure, as long as you allow the same rules that we have, which includes hunting." But so, yeah, and stories are different for each one.
Yeah.
So, so it seems like what, so what, if I'm understanding, what the plan is saying is, you know, just regarding hunting and firearms is, there's this issue, it really belongs in a conversation with conservation commission, so the plan is saying that's where it belongs. So, in adopting the plan, we're not saying yay or nay, we're saying that's where that conversation belongs and the future will be informed by that conversation that they have in that appropriate place, but we're acknowledging that that's where it belongs as part of the plan.
Exactly.
We're not saying yes, no, do it, don't do it.
But as you said, the conversation you had two weeks ago is reflected here.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
In the meantime, we can go about building bike trails and.
I think it was one with Mark, wasn't it?
He has missed us, Alan.
That's right. So, other questions, comments from the board?
What about the suggestion that you brought out from the discussion that there is this organization is going to work with, you're engaged in this project, is that part of it?
That's an empty conservation commission, but it's certainly legitimate. I mean, they have to figure out.
A profit, I want to engage you, different activities, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. I mean, Kevin Lake, who's the conservation commission chair, his day job when he was working in the corporate world was consulting sometimes dysfunctional corporations. And, and I, so I think he, and that's not saying that he would do this, but I think he sort of, he's thought something, what's the right process to move them forward to get there? So, that's absolutely, you know, one of the things they're going to look at. I don't really know, in a discussion we had before I came over here, they had the same conversation that endorsing this doesn't mean that they're committed to anything, but they want to have some conversation going forward, but I don't know what form it's going to take.
And there's one other thing, there was about the maintenance of this space that you keep acquiring and you bring them up and then what happened after that?
So, I addressed, you know, it's funny, I went back to my office and it wasn't 100% what we had in mind, but it's okay because I put it in two places it could have been. So, in the thing about hunting, it's representative, as one of the things we heard is if we allow hunting, people shoot up everything, there's a maintenance issue there, so I reflected there. And then generally in terms of how we manage land, I had some discussion there. So, we're in a much better vision than we were seven years ago. A year and a half ago, the mayor authorized a half-time position for us. And so, we now have a person who spends 20 hours a week maintaining our conservation properties. Part of that is bricks and mortar going out and doing work and part is developing neighborhood groups and more stewards for doing it. So, on the conservation side, I think we're doing a better job of maintenance than ever and we're addressing that. I think there's still, and conservation's still relatively inexpensive, I manage 50% of the city with a half-time person. That's still an issue on the parks and recreation side, but at least the mayor's aware of it. So, we cleaned up Plasky Park, it's a great place, it's been so heavily used, it could use a full-time maintenance person doing nothing about that. So, it's certainly an agenda, the mayor's certainly heard that from people, the plan certainly talks about it, but like other recommendations, the fact that we talk about it doesn't guarantee this is going to be more likely. But at least we put it, you know, the point of some of these things is to put it in the public agenda, that, you know, you can go to, you know, you can support DPOB's budget when you ask for a maintenance person. We've documented that, we have it ready out here. So, we did keep your idea of sort of, should we document the purpose of that?
Okay. Do you have a particular topic you were here for, sir?
I was here to make public comment, I got tied up in conservation.
On which item?
You guys are going to adopt the open space plan tonight?
Yes.
That's what I would like to make comment on.
And if you'll just identify yourself.
Yep. My name's William Galaski, I'm living the Florence section of North Hampton. I've been involved in the plans in the last two years, trying to work out the active recreation end of the plan. And I tend to think sometimes that North Hampton, or the plan is narrow-minded or forgetting some of the active recreational opportunities that could happen. I'm an avid hunter, fisherman, snowmobiler. I'm an avid hunter, fisherman, snowmobiler, ATV-er. On the last plan and this plan, I've been trying to help get that portion of active recreation increased. We haven't made much headway. There's some existing motorized stuff that was there long before any of these plans came in place. That's still there. There hasn't been any true, I'll say, increases to it. And then on the hunting end of it, there've been, we picked up a piece and we lost a piece. So basically, to me, that was a wash. If you look up active recreation in the dictionary, it includes motorized vehicles. It includes outdoor activities, all that type of stuff. So like I said, I tend to think that we forget about some of that in our plan. I'm going to say I'm here to throw grain of salt underneath the big wheel. The plan in itself is a great plan. But I'm concerned about one part of it, and I just want to voice my opinion on that. Active recreation increasing hunting and things like that was approved in the last plan, was one of the 12 components that we were supposed to work on that, truthfully, I'll say with the wash, I don't felt that we worked on it, or we, we increased any of that. And there was a lot of other areas with increases. Um, out of our 147-page plan, there's one item that didn't make it. And it's for future consideration, hunting. 147 pages. I know the majority of it, probably 15 pages, is the true pertinent information, but 147 pages. Truthfully, to me, I consider that a prejudice against my active recreation. That's why I'm here talking to you, and I'm concerned about that. There was many meetings. I'll say the city, and I'll, I'll put this on the city, didn't get facts. Everyone goes to the meetings and, my neighbor shot my cow, and they're shooting at midnight. That's not facts, you know? So when you use that to push your cause out and try to prevent things from happening, I'm concerned about that. I'll make a statement, and this was part, they proposed some increases, which have been taken off the table. And I'll quote Wayne, and I don't know if this is the exact quote, he can probably tell me. But one of the pieces was spoken about as a tick-infested jungle, that they were going to open up to hunting. We didn't even get a tick-infested jungle. I don't have a lot of hope that down the road, we're going to get anything better, or even the tick-infested jungle. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I'm a citizen in Northampton. Lived here for 30 years. Used to hunt out my back door until the city bought it. Now I can't. And I can't go many places in the city to do that recreation until we go elsewhere. We make bypass, we make trails, we do that type of stuff. We don't ask them to go elsewhere. I was involved in the last plan, once again, just like this plan. I believe active recreation is mentioned in the 12 items three to four times. So obviously, it was important. It was similar to that in the last plan, but we've made no headway. So truthfully, I think we failed there. I'm afraid we're failing again. Once again, I know this is a minute spec of the whole plan, but it's an important part to me, and that's why I'm here tonight. Truthfully, I'll say sickens me about the inequality of the lands that the city of Northampton owns. And to some point, they've become private parks. So you can do this, you can do that, but you can't do this, you can't ride a bike, you can't go in with an ATV, you can't do that. So we're excluding a population. We're, I'm an active ATV rider, active snowmobiler. Follow the rules, buy my registration, do what I need to do, pay into the system. There's many other activities that have no fees, that get to use it, and I pay fees and I get nothing. If you don't give people places to go, they're just going to go. And that's what you don't want. If you give people places to go, they're going to go out and hopefully, just like anyone else, hikers may do the wrong thing, bikers may do the wrong thing. We hope that the people in my groups don't do the wrong thing, but if we have a place to go and a place to recreate, we're just not going to go anywhere. But if we have nothing, and we do it legally, you know, what do you, it's just frustrating. So those are just the points I wanted to bring up once again. I know the plan is 99.9% solid, but that's my areas of concern. Actually, I hate to say that I don't want to see it get adopted, but in the same instance, I'm afraid if I let it get adopted, we'll go through another seven years. And the seven years really concerns me because we're not talking about a year plan. We're talking about the next seven years. So if everything gets locked into place, 2025, who knows where I'll be then? Maybe sitting in a wheelchair, not being able to recreate. So I just want to bring that point out, and hopefully, you know, and I'm willing as a citizen to be involved. I told Conservation Area, I told Wayne before, that I'd be more than happy to be involved, um, move things forward.
All right, yes. I just don't, I don't want to cut you off.
I'm done.
Okay. So I just want to go back, and we have had some conversation when we came in on, on the, the plan and what Wayne and the city is proposing. And I will just say on, on the firearms and hunting issue, you know, what they are recommending is not a definitive response. It's that this, you know, identifies that this particular issue is particularly troublesome and polarizing within the city. And utilizes the vehicle of the Conservation Commission for further review. So there's not a definitive, this is what's going to happen, this is what's not going to happen regarding hunting and firearms, you know? I, I think that it was heard, and I, I don't think you were here, but a couple, few weeks ago, we had, you know, we were here for three hours hearing from folks. So we, it's clearly a very, you know, important issue, and, and the plan seems to recommend, we need to, we need to say that this needs to be further, needs to have further, you know.
And I understand that, but that's what the last plan said, and that's my concern. So we went through seven years with not, I'll say, no change.
Okay, okay. But I, I just, you know.
Pretty scary to me.
It does put it back to the Conservation Commission, where it seems like would be an appropriate place where it would have some.
And I'm hoping in the future that when we purchase lands, we'll think about everybody. And I think that's part of the problem, and I understand that. But that, that problem can be fixed. With partnerships and thought and getting the proper information, you know?
I just.
Thank you.
I wish you'd be here in the last meeting that I saw, because there was nobody about, like you supporting the gun, the, the hunting. So where that's what, I, I just, and I ask the folks, why there is nobody, like you're here, right, to make your point?
And I've been to many meetings. Most of the time, it's hard. And once again, the, the plan just came out on, what, the sixth? The email that I got, I mean, we're talking the 14th, or I think it actually was even later than that. So, okay, boom, you got to spring to action. If I knew the meeting was there, I've been to many meetings, I've been involved with all the other ones. Sometimes it's hard to get that information.
There's a question. Where does the seven-year timeline come from? Is that just the way it's been done in the past, or is that?
So the state creates the maximum length we can do. It used to be five years. They decided it was too much of a burden. But cities do every five years and change to seven years. We can certainly do it less often, but it just, it's expensive and consumes a lot of time. So we've done the maximum good. Nothing to stop us from coming back, revisiting if we wanted to, got it?
I'm just, I'm looking for a piece of, a piece of the pie that we all should have.
And does expansion, I mean, one of the things that you seem to focus on is wanting an expansion of, of activities. I mean, if we, if it just sort of stayed constant, would that be okay?
Like what stayed constant?
Like ATV use and, I mean, there is some hunting, obviously, there, and there is some ATV use.
Until now, Wayne can tell me if I'm wrong, like, the Jeep beater trail was specifically, I'll say Jeep orientated, but now it does include ATV. From experience, and I've been doing it a long time. If you give them a one-way road up to the end and you turn around, that's when people start going off-trail. They're going to find something different. If that road was a loop, you're less likely to have people go off-trail, because they're not driving up four miles and coming back the same four miles. So like in Bear Town State Forest, places like that where ATVing is legal, they have loops, and that tends to keep people on trail. So I'm on the Board of Directors of the Snowmobile Association. We do a lot of trail maintenance, trail work. We want to, you know, we try to pass laws for safety, OUI, that type of stuff. Our association pushes that forward because we want professional people out there, you know, respecting the sport and doing the right thing, so that we can continue to do it.
So I think we talked about this in the last meeting, but that, a lot of this is, again, the maintenance and management as opposed to policy. So the plan is about policy, not saying this trail can be ATV or this trail needs a loop road. So even, I mean, they're, in the action items, they, they're, you know, point three and three are, you know, developing partnerships for, I'm sorry, for snowmobile use, and then I guess it's three about further, and, and more about ATV use. So, and then, then there's hunting. So three of the, of the six, or, I think there are 12 total, but, of these six are about that type of active recreation. Again, it's about poli, it's at the policy level, you know, this, at this level, not at specific trails and how to create.
Many of these migrants are afraid to even come out to any of these meetings, because they're like, you're never going to get anywhere, ever, ever, ever. I just believe that. I think you got to be here, you got to speak your piece. We can all work together. We can all come to a happy outcome. I know that. Like I said, I'm not looking to go through all of Northampton hunted, but out in the western parks where there's three houses next to 58ers, it, it can work. And I'm willing to help make that work. So I don't, I don't want to stand here to voice my opinion. I volunteer.
And I think, it seems like the plan will create the opportunity to do.
I hope so. So even with the snowmobile end of it, and I said, I'm in the snowmobile club, the state of Massachusetts, our association does thousands and thousands of hours of trail maintenance. We all get grants for trail maintenance. Actually, our last grant was $6,000 worth of power equipment for cleaning trails. But we do river road down in Chesterfield, the Chesterfield Forge. And the DCR will call us, because they're so short-staffed, and ask us if we can take care of issues down there, if there's a tree down or they need something.
And I can vouch for that. I, I do know, uh, snowmobile trail, and, and you, people do a great job of maintaining it, so I can vouch for that.
So, I, like I said, just wanted to speak my opinion, and hopefully, we can move forward. Not looking for the world, just looking for a little piece of the pie that we can all get, get along together.
We appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
I guess I move to close public talk.
Seconds by test, all in favor?
It seems like a great plan. I think, you know, this, the fact that it's working at this level and it's, you know, the employees of Northampton's job to work on the, the nuts and bolts is, you know, it provides, it provides, Wayne with the ability to get more money to, to our city, and that's what we need.
And it doesn't close any doors. It provides the opportunity to continue whatever direction the city feels is appropriate.
Yeah, and I guess the, the only feedback I would have, Wayne, and Carolyn, I mean, the seven, you know, the seven years, I, I can see both sides of that. I mean, you know, it seems like a really long time to come back to, you know, by the time you get to the end of the seven years, well, what did we, you know, I mean, it is, it is kind of a long time, but I can see where, you don't want to be going through this effort, you know, from just a pragmatic standpoint, every two years either. So I guess, I, I can see that part of it. I'm involved in, in our agency. There's things that we have to do every four years, every six years, and, you know, it's, sometimes you forget, like, well, what, what did we say we were going to do, and, you know, so. But if something came.
Sounds like we could do an amendment, though.
Yeah. Or not even. If something came up at year four that we needed to, we need to change, we can do that.
But there is a reviewing in between, right? Revising the, the, the plan in between, in before the seventh year.
That's right. Right, certain things come up.
I mean, you, you just can't do this.
Right.
Isn't, it's every five years, every three, no, you can't. You just have to have a long-term goal, and then you build it up and do amendments and this and that.
One thing that everyone has said, from all these different people who have come in, is that everyone agrees on 99.9. And so in my world, I, I follow sort of an 80/20 rule. And 80/20 is much, that's much lower than 99.
You're way ahead.
And so if we're at 99, I feel like it's a slam dunk.
Right, exactly.
And, and more importantly, and I think that this is where I, I'm confident, is that when we have people like Carolyn and Wayne and this gentleman, we, we are a wonderful community that does, fortunately, we're one of the last places that doesn't seem to yell at each other all the time. There is a little bit of yelling, but it's not all the time. And I feel like we can come to some sort of conclusion, or some sort of agreement, maybe, on the 0.1% that needs some, needs to be discussed. So I move to, to support this and to adopt it as it is.
Mark seconds. All in favor?
Yep.
Opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Congratulations. Do you have minutes?
Do we do, do I say it first?
I don't think so.
No, we don't.
But you have it on your wrist.
And I don't have the A and R.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for a second. Mark, all in favor? Have a nice evening.